Good morning. Welcome to Tennessean.com. I'm David Plazas, the Opinion and Engagement Editor and a member of the Editorial Board. I'm joined by my colleague Frank Daniels III, Metro columnist. And today we have the second of 12 interviews with school board candidates from Metro Nashville Public Schools. We have Jackson Miller, candidate for District 7. And we'll just get started right now. Thank you so much for joining us, Jackson.
Thank you for having me. Glad to be here.
Well, tell us, why are you running for this office? And tell us a little bit about yourself.
Sure. So I think the thing people notice first about me is I have a lot of kids. I have five sons that are in Nashville Public Schools. I've also been a partner in the schools as a pencil partner and on various committees. And I'm a small business owner. But why I'm running is largely about my own personal experience as an MMPS student. I was also a student who fell through the cracks when I was in high school. And I still remember what that feels like. And so I'm running because I'm desperately trying to make sure that my kids don't follow that exact same path and to try and make sure that all kids in Nashville have access to receive a high-quality education.
Now, you've been involved with numerous initiatives like the Nashville Area Chamber of Commerce Report Card. Tell us how these experiences and others have informed your view of what the role of a school board member should be.
Yeah, so when I was the co-chair of the Report Card Committee in my final year, we specifically looked at education leadership. And that's when I became more familiar with what the policy governance model is, which is the model that our school board has adopted, though not always followed. And so from that context and from that perspective, my understanding of a good school board member is one who is working with the director to set the strategic goals, but yet staying out of the tactical implementation. And so, you know, I'm excited that Dr. Joseph's here. It sounds like he has very similar ideas on how that relationship should work. And so I'm looking forward to working together.
Some of the -- we've had some wonderful conversations, Jackson. One of the things that is very interesting to me is the work you've been doing with one of the high schools, your pencil partner high school here in Tenth. Can you tell me a little bit about what you do, why you do it, and how that translates into what you would do as a school board member if you got elected?
Yeah, I mean, I think that there are a lot of people in Nashville working hard to try and make sure that our schools are great and that kids have access to the education that they need. How I became a pencil partner at Maplewood High School is that I was also on the East Nashville Advisory Committee when we were trying to figure out what to do there. And at the end of that process, Principal Ron Woodard asked everybody to come to Maplewood, and I did. And I liked the energy that was there. One of their academies is the Academy of Entrepreneurship and Innovation. And I am an entrepreneur, and so that seemed like a good fit. I became a pencil partner and joined their advisory committee where I became the advisory chair. The more fun parts of that involvement, though, are like the opportunity to go and talk with kids about the importance of taking the dual-credit classes and earning college credit while still in high school and giving a presentation to a marketing class. Like, that's the fun stuff. But once you're in the building, you start to see the need. And one of the things that there was a need for is kids were getting suspended for not being in school-standard attire. And I own some retail stores called Plato's Closet. And when we're done with clearance items that didn't sell, now we donate them to the Maplewood Cluster. We've donated to Maplewood, Jerry Baxter, and I believe Gray Market, some of them as well. And this way, if students don't have appropriate school clothes, they can go to the Panthers' Closet and receive them. And so that's the kind of thing that happens when business partners get in the schools and see what the needs are. It's hard to always know what's needed and what resources we have available. So what kind of board member will I be? Well, I think the same way, like, jump in and whatever I can do, like, let's make it happen.
So when you look at that kind of relationship that you have with Maplewood, how replicable is that? Is that something that happens because there's a unique passion? Or do you think this is something that can be replicated at other schools?
Well, it is. I mean, it is replicated at other schools. This is just one example of many. And I think that the Pencil Foundation does a good job of helping to match business partners with schools. And the work that's been done in the academies and how the academy coach model works so that the partners have a relationship with that academy coach. And the goal is that it's never dependent on one person.
Right.
I have stepped down as advisory chair of the Maplewood Advisory Committee because I feel it's a conflict now I'm running for school board. But Plato's Closet will still able to be involved, you know, that we'll still have a representative that goes and participates.
Yeah, but we could talk a little bit about one issue that has come up, student-based budgeting. Chris Henson, who was at the time interim director, and Sharon Gentry, the school board chair, spoke to the editorial board maybe a couple months ago about that. And there's still a lot of misunderstanding about what that means. And do you have a grasp of what that is? And are you supportive of this particular model?
Yeah, absolutely. Yes, I have a grasp, and yes, I'm supportive. Also, my final year on the Report Card Committee, we recommended that the district look at what was in the way of increasing principal budget autonomy. And the student-based budgeting and budget autonomy are not the exact same thing, but they're closely linked. So my understanding of the student-based budgeting is that it takes more for kids to succeed in some scenarios. It takes more to teach elementary kids than high school kids. It takes more to teach a kid that's in English learning program than a kid who's not. And so they use that weighted formula and assign how much money that goes with that kid, and then that becomes that school's budget. And I'm a big fan of that. I think that that's also referenced in the ESSA Act, Every Student Succeeds Act, largest bipartisan federal bill in a long time. And it talks about that same kind of model. I think what we'll have to do is we'll have to look at what those multipliers are, you know, and see if they're right. And that's where we need to make adjustments. Is it, you know, are we putting enough towards EL? Are we putting enough towards Special Ed, you know, and that kind of thing?
So one of the continuing debates that we have here in Metro and across the state and, of course, across the nation is how we assess progress of our students and our teachers. Can you tell us a little bit about your thoughts about assessment?
Yeah. I think that the standardized annual assessment is important for a couple of reasons. One, it's important for understanding trend data over time. Two, it's important for understanding subgroup performance. And then, you know, are there any groups of the kids that are getting left out by certain characteristics? I have a background in business intelligence consulting and used to build dashboards. I understand metric-driven businesses really well. I'm also probably a more skeptical of it for that same reason. And so I feel like we maybe are using those test scores a little too much. I think we definitely need to be measuring, you know, the success and the progress of our students, and that needs to be the number-one priority. But we may be able to look at some more important measures or more combining that with other measures in order to get a better picture of success.
So what can I interrupt? What kind of other measures would you be interested in?
Yeah, so, you know, we look at a lot of schools in town using Fontis and Penelly for reading level at the elementary school. I think that's really, really great. We should be using that to measure the success of the students. It's not the same kind of standardized assessment. You know, it's different. It's more, it helps the teachers inform instructions more, but it also provides us with that benchmark of how they're doing. And I've visited 44 different schools in Nashville over the past few years, and a lot of them have data walls. And there are a lot of elementary schools that are succeeding. You can see exactly where each kid is on the Fontis-Penelly wall. They, I don't know, their privacy is maintained.
They're notized.
But you see the dots or the flags or the little cutouts of people. And those schools are, you know, laser-focused on moving those kids to where they become better readers. And that is so critically important because the reading level on third grade is just this huge predictor of future success. And so putting a lot of effort there, using something like Fontis and Penelly to measure that success is good. And that could be part of that, that could be something we're using to look at, you know, teacher effectiveness, school performance, that kind of stuff, in addition to just standardized.
Given your engagement at Maplewood, do you see, have you noticed a linkage between the engagement of a pencil partner or businesses in the school and student or teacher performance in the assessment side?
Yeah.
Is it measurable, that engagement?
Yeah, that's, you know, it's hard to tell. There's a real special energy at Maplewood, and I think that that's having an impact. And I think we'll see that in the measures. I think more than the pencil partner engagement, what I've learned from my time at Maplewood is that student engagement is so, so critical. And how partners can help in that is that we can make things more interesting. And what I hear from teachers is that they can say, you know, X, Y, Z is important, and then the students sort of believe it. And a partner comes in and says, X, Y, Z is important, and all of a sudden it has more credibility. So really, the partners are there in a support role, but also it helps, it helps keep it relevant and helps students be more engaged. And so it's working really well, you know, in a bunch of places across the city and in other places where, you know, we still haven't hit that high performance. But yeah, I'm a supporter.
This past week, the school board decided to sue the state by a vote of six ayes, two abstentions, and then one board member who was absent. Did you support that vote? And how might you have voted had you been on the school board?
First, one of my frustrations with this current school board is that it seems a lot of times that there's just a vote and that you're supposed to show up and know how you vote. And I really feel like there should be more discussion to understand and dialogue to talk about it. Where I sit on the BEP lawsuit is a last resort because it's such an unpredictable outcome. And at the same time, you know, like I said, ESSA has some language in it about making sure that we have equitable funding based on, you know, stuff like EL. And so we have the opportunity to work with the state now because there's sort of a federal mandate to change the formula already. And so we can work and collaborate as being part of the solution. Dr. Joseph isn't even here yet, so to me, this seems like we have a huge opportunity. And instead, we've sort of hamstrung that opportunity, I feel like, and made it to where this is now going to be something that we have to spend money on and that Dr. Joseph has to deal with, you know, when he officially starts. He's already been hitting the ground running, but when he officially starts next month. So I would have liked to have had discussion. I would have likely made a motion to readdress that after Dr. Joseph was here.
So there was discussion. I think the concern was that all that discussion was an executive session with the Metro Legal Department. Those of us that are privy, which would be everybody not on the school board, don't know what that discussion is.
Okay.
Would you?
I would have loved to have been there. I would have loved to have been there.
Or would you, do you support having a public discussion of matters of this importance? It's a lawsuit, so there's lots of reasons not to discuss strategy in public, but is this one of those times where you might do it?
You know, I think that transparency really increases buy-in, and we want the city to be on the same page. I mean, yeah, so I don't see a reason to not have explanation or discussion in that process, yeah.
So where do you see that the school board is doing well? And where are the problem or challenge areas? If you were to pick one or two challenges or one or two strengths?
I think a challenge is that there does seem to, it seems that when there's discussion during board meetings, they are not talking with each other, they're talking at each other. And so I think that that's maybe an easy way to characterize the biggest challenge. Some things that they're doing well, you know, they brought Shawn Joseph. You know, we have a director that I think a lot of people are excited about. And, you know, I do believe in that people change and not, you know, to have a little forgiveness. And so we are seeing new kinds of behavior from the board recently. I think that's great and should be encouraged and acknowledged. I hope that that continues after the election, regardless of who wins, you know, if it's the new people or if it's the old people, that we can continue having a, you know, a more civil, a more civil kind of dialogue.
You talked about the new director. He gave a reading assignment to the current board members, Leadership and Self-Deception. Have you read the book yet?
I have not read the book yet. I am incredibly busy right now and have not been spending enough time reading. I've looked at the book. It's, it looks like a good framework for a discussion. It looks like a fine way to have a shared vernacular. It doesn't look like there's any groundbreaking new ideas in there. It's just sort of good management principles. And that's an area where, you know, I am a manager. I have a, I run a company with 70 employees, and so it gels, what I've read, it gels with how I try to run my company. So I look forward to reading it and discussing it. I wish I was going to be able to go to the retreat even next week at that timing.
So there's certainly been discussions, and this may be, I want to get your perspective on the discussion of the charter school debate. And some camps say, well, we're past that. Some say that we still have this aggressive pro-charter, anti-charter. How would you explain your perception of where we are on this and how do we move forward?
I think that there's a lot of bad information still floating around. My stance on charter schools, when I was on the Report Card Committee, we advocated for default closure of any charter school that falls in the bottom 5%. Big supporter of that. If you want to do things different, you got to do them better. Now, other end of the spectrum, I'm absolutely against vouchers and for-profit charter schools. As a business owner, I know how hard it is to make a profit. I know how hard it is to educate kids. I see no way that combining those makes that easier. And so within that framework, you know, we have schools that are succeeding where the district has struggled, and we need to support that. There is a belief that there are for-profit charters in town, where there is a profit motive. I don't think that's right. I don't think that's accurate. And I think that that kind of discussion by people in leadership needs to stop because I think that everybody knows that it's illegal in Tennessee to have for-profit charter schools. If we want to look at where profit motives are in public education, I think it's largely around assessments and big district-wide contracts and not in, you know, charter-building ownership or something. But that we should look at all of the places where there is, you know, a profit motive and make sure we're kind of keeping that in check. When we get the misinformation out, I mean, obviously, in this race, people ask me about it when I'm doing events or we're at the door. And when we put it in this context of, you know, default closure and no profit motive, people are generally supportive of schools that are succeeding where we haven't. And then, you know, there's this idea that maybe charters initially started as a way to innovate and enroll those innovations back in. And just to use this as a segue, but I think that from what I've seen, high-performing chart, in high-performing charters, that what's working is you have a great leader in the building and you give them a lot of decision-making ability. And so that's something I believe we can replicate. That's something that I believe that when we have a really great leader in the building like at Maplewood, that we can drastically increase the level of autonomy that we're giving there and take the reins off and say, you know, I'm not going to tell you what you have to do. Here's the strategic initiative, let's go. Because I'm not, I'm not smart enough to sit at the top and know how to run every single school, and I don't think there's anybody who is. And so we're seeing that work in the charter sector, and we're seeing pockets of that work in MMPS, where you have really strong leaders who have, either officially or unofficially, sort of had the reins taken off. And I think we should, we should look towards building a system that replicates that.
Looking at the aspect of leadership, Mayor Berry took a very active role in superintendent search. And how do you envision, how would you like that relationship between the school board and the mayor or Metro to be if you're elected to the school board? Or even if you're not, you know, in the future, what would that ideal be? Because it seems like it was critical to making sure that Dr. Joseph was hired.
Yeah, yeah, we advocated for the new mayor being involved in director search. And also, you know, Shannon Hunt played a big part in that as well. And I think that we need to have a collaborative relationship with the city and with all the organizations like Pencil and the Public Education Foundation that are, that are working in our schools. With the city, there, it seems to me there are opportunities around how the schools in the city can work together after school, on how the city and the schools can work together on facilities. But also, our challenges with poverty in the school system and the city are interlinked. And affordable housing and workforce housing and school resegregation are all related, and it's going to require the city and the school system working together. Going back to the role of the board member, I don't know that the individual board members and the mayor need to be the ones making that happen. That may be more tactical and be Shawn Joseph and working closely with the mayor, with the board's support and strategic direction. And I believe that Dr. Register and Mayor Dean had a regular meeting similarly. So I hope that something like that can happen.
Picking up on what you were talking about, what individual board behaviors, in an earlier conversation that you and I had, you articulated the way you think about how board members should conduct themselves. And you had a, I thought it was a very interesting way of articulating that.
Well, I'd love for you to share it with us if I did it so well the last time.
I want to see if you're going to say the same thing again.
Sure, sure. You know, I don't know, I don't know which aspect you're talking about, but, you know, the board is there to create success for the system, right? And so we are motivated to make sure that the whole system succeeds and should act as such. By taking on this role, I understand that I give up some of my individuality to be an advocate for the system, and that's just, that's just part of what we're taking on here. There was an article in the Tennessean, it might have been yours, that said that described, there was a line about the director having nine bosses, and that's, you know, I know you know this, but that's not right, right? The director has one boss, and that's the majority of the board. And I think we have had a system where it feels like there are nine individual bosses. You know, I really enjoy being in schools and visiting schools. And even during this campaign, I've realized that my behavior needs to change when I'm there. Like, it's less about sharing my ideas and more listening. It's always been about listening and seeing what's going on, but I have to be careful what I say because it carries more weight. And I stepped down from my role on the Maplewood Advisory Board because as the advisory chair, if I say, here's what I think we should do, and I'm a board candidate, and they're like, well, you know, we should definitely do that in case he wins, you know? It's like, I shouldn't even say, here's what I think we should do at that point. So I mean, that's, hopefully, that's along the lines of what I said before. It's my core.
Well, that's very interesting, but I was really thinking more in terms of personal behavior. You had a whole articulation about what you thought about bullying and...
Yeah, I mean, let's be, let's just be frank.
I am frank.
Right, right. You be frank, I'll be Jackson. That's our answer. But I'll be blunt. My opponent calls me names online, and I'm not the only one. And it's happened for a long time. And that's, that's just not, that's just not appropriate behavior from a leader. We need to, you know, I'm not saying that board members need to be, you know, perfect role models because no one's perfect, but the entire organization is looking to the board for leadership examples. And when we are degrading to peers or detractors or subordinates, it says that that's okay. And it's not okay. And so, you know, we have cyberbullying policies for our students, and it seems like a really low bar to say that our board will follow the same policy. And so, you know, yeah, this is, you know, my campaign is partly about that. Like, I think we need better leadership and that sometimes that is in the temperament and in the behavior and how you treat people.
So along that line, certainly, one of the aspects that, I'll go ahead and ask the question if you're...
No, please, please.
So certainly, some of the aspects that your opponent has been talking about in the District 7 race is some of your past experiences and behaviors. And I'd like to hear how you want to, you know, how you treat that, how you explain it, and just so that voters know.
Yeah, I mean, and so we haven't, right? I mean, like, the point has been that I think what he says about me says more about him than it does about me, and so we haven't made a big deal out of it. For those of you at home, what we're talking about, since January, my opponent has sent out emails about me with mischaracterizations of my past. And we started with talking today about that, you know, I'm a parent with a lot of kids, highly-involved parent. And that's something that really resonates with voters. It really speaks to my credibility as a candidate. And so my opponent has been circulating information to suggest that I don't pay child support, when in reality, I do pay child support. And there was an incident with the state where they said, oh, we need to look at this, and they found I'd overpaid a little bit. So it's, and that's easily findable that that was the case. And so, you know, I'm a great, I'm a great heavily-involved father. Whether or not you don't pay child support, well, in reality, yeah, I am.
But you did, you had an arrest record and...
Yeah, so I'm, you know, a productive community member who, you know, sits on boards and committees, and he circulates a mugshot. And, you know, this is embarrassing. This was hashed out in the scene in January or February. I got a speeding ticket that I didn't pay, which got my license suspended. I got another speeding ticket. And I learned my license suspended and took care of it, paid it, and got all my license stuff. But the driving without a license was a criminal charge. And I, you know, it was, I didn't handle the administrative side of this well. They came and picked me up and arrested me for failing to appear. They took my mugshot. The judge said, oh, you have your license, everything's dismissed. So do I have, like, some big criminal record? No. Is there a mugshot? Yeah, there's a mugshot, and it's embarrassing. But it's an attempt to detract from the fact that I am a, you know, really positive, involved member of the community and to try and smear me. And why we haven't talked about it much is that I'd much rather talk about, you know, how we're going to work with the new director, how a board member should behave, you know, and what, and what policy governance looks like about principal budget autonomy, about, you know, how to increase supports for English-language learners or for students in poverty, how to reduce suspension rates. I mean, like, these are the things I'd like to be talking about. Instead, we're going to talk about my driving record. And so it's unfortunate. I, you know, I'm expecting that now the race gets more attention, that we'll see mailers, you know, with my mugshot going out or something. And, you know, like I said, because there's nothing really substantial there in that history, I think that that says more about his character than it does about mine.
Okay. Well, you talked about principal autonomy, and that certainly has become a big discussion. And in our first interview with another candidate, we talked about, is there some kind of balance? How do you essentially, do you immediately encourage Dr. Joseph to have these principals become autonomous? And what is the level of balance? Because he's certainly stated quite publicly that he wants to see less emphasis on the central office and more emphasis on the actual schools. If you could tell us a little bit about your approach and philosophy and what recommendations you might offer on the board?
Sure. So I own a multi-unit retail company, right? So I have people that run buildings. And in my company, I actually learned this from my dad, who was an executive, he was the director of IT at Vanderbilt. We take our managers and they go through a phase, a series. When someone first becomes a manager, they're in a directing phase where we're very specific. Here's what you need to do. Here's how you run this store. Here's how you hire people. Here's how you do this job. Then they grow and mature in that role and move into a collaborative phase. We say, here's how we need to get it done. Here's what we've done in the past. How should we handle it? And we work together. And then that moves into a delegation when we just have a really great manager at this point. It's like, hey, here's the strategic initiative. Go get it done. Let me know if you need help or have any questions. And that's great when you have, when you have somebody in that phase because that's when they can exceed your expectations. That's when it can become better than the leader, and the organization learns. And that's where innovation a lot of times will take place in an organization like this. I think that that same model fits. And one of the criticisms of principal autonomy is that there are principals who are not very effective managers. And so there are teachers who have had bad experiences working for, you know, I'll say a bad boss, but I don't think that's a permanent state. a bad boss, but I don't think that's a permanent state. And one of the things we're going to need to fix, I think, in the district and address is what that management structure looks like. If we're in a directing phase, who is overseeing that principal? And are they in the building, working with them, helping them get to the collaboration phase? Because right now, the lead principal model is a step in the right direction, but the lead principals still maintain their own buildings. Some lead principals are better than others. But there are principals in town who, when Dr. Joseph, you know, and I sit down, I would be happy to say, hey, I think that they are most likely already be in this delegation phase, you know? Let's see what we can do to accelerate there. But it's different for every manager and for every building. And hopefully, that provides feedback, hopefully, we're getting feedback from the team in the building too, to kind of have an idea of how that's going. And that's part of that process. And so, by the time we get to that, you know, the principal has a lot of autonomy phase, the teachers in the building and the support staff should be like going, all right, things are about to be really great here now because they've been doing such a good job already. And also, that puts this focus and this framework on constant improvement and building our team. And that's something that I think that we've also struggled with in the district, is almost like we treat people as if this is where you are and where you'll always be. And it didn't work, you know, you're gone. We have really high turnover at principals. You know, we always give principals a one-year contract. There are some principals that might be like, hey, you know, I want to give you a 10-year contract because you've been killing it for a long time, I don't want you to go anywhere. We just lost the principal of my kid's school at Waverly Belmont, Kimber Halliburton, wonderful leader. She's had big successes in the district, and now she's going to go be a superintendent. We just lost a really great assistant principal at Maplewood, who's taking a principal job in Mari County. In order to have great leaders in the building, they're all getting that delegation phase, we've got to keep the great leaders that we have.
What did you think when Dr. Joseph announced that he was going to have a community-driven process to select principals?
I think it's great. I think that it's really good to have buy-in of the community. I think that a lot of the pushback that we've had in the district over the past couple of years has been from a lack of community buy-in, and this will be a good way to address that. I think that he's got a really challenging timeline. I mean, it was decisive action quickly before he really had the reins. And that kind of leadership excites me a little bit. But now he's got a high-risk situation where we've got to execute this and get good leaders in the building that we have buy-in for. And so, the clock's ticking, you know, the kids report back here in just a few weeks. And in this interim, there is a lot of ambiguity for the teams in the building. And it was such a sudden shift that I think there may have been some surprises to some people and some almost-done deals that rolled back. And I think that that's a cost of the decision, and we'll have to overcome it. But I'm excited about this process. Hopefully, we can take this whole process, if it works well, and then move it back a few months going forward.
So, if you could pick one thing that this district is doing well, what would it be? Just one.
One thing that the district is doing well? I would say that it's what's happening in the classroom. I think that there are some really great teachers. We have a staff that is really passionate and aligned. I think that we have a staff, a team that believes that every kid can succeed and that that's the best thing the district has going for it, is that at the end of the day, there are some really phenomenal teachers in the classrooms. Yeah.
And then, same vein, you have, there's one thing that if it was improved, it would make the most difference, what would that one thing be?
I think that's generally organizational culture. And moving towards an organizational culture where we're focused on building our team, focused on making sure our team is better next year than they are this year, keeping the great people, bringing in more great people. A players want to work with A players. And so, we have the opportunity to create an organizational culture where everybody feels like the school system is vested in their success and wants them to succeed. I think the outcome from that will be that that's exactly how we should be also treating our kids, right? That we're building our kids and helping the kids, and the kids know that we're invested in them and that we know that they're going to succeed. And if we're investing in the team that's investing in the kids, I think that's the best way to get that outcome.
Another issue is on superintendent retention. Dr. Joseph has a four-year contract, but the average CEO lasts maybe two, two and a half years. What are the conditions that the board has to create, that the majority of the board has to create, to ensure that he is able to fulfill that contract and, if not, extend beyond it?
It's easy to blame the last guy, right? And this is not to say Dr. Register. I mean, like, a new board comes in in August, and I think it was Dr. Joseph in his community interview that said that the board that hires you is always the board that loves you the most, right? And so, in August, he'll have a slightly different board in some way, and it'd be easy for some of those board rumors to go, ah, you know, the last guy's made this decision and that was a bad one. It's a way to sort of shuck responsibility by blaming the last guy. And so, you know, if we have that continuity, if we have that open, transparent dialogue, you know, if he's creating community buy-in with principal decisions and that goes well, we're going to have a community that's saying, no, we want Dr. Joseph to stay, right? I mean, if he's succeeding and if he's got, if he's getting results for the kids, there'll be a really loud chorus asking him to stay. I mean, I think the risk is, and this is probably what happens more often than not, is the scenario of moderate success, you know? And how do you create retention during moderate success? And I think, kind of like how Pencil has addressed Academy Partners, if you create a system of continuous improvement and stability that's not reliant on any one individual, then as long as that system sort of continues following along, then we'll continue seeing the progress.
Back to my sort of simple questions. Can you tell me about the person that you admire most, why?
The individual person that I admire most? That's, you know, this is so cheesy, but that's all going to be in my family, right? I mean, like, my wife just kills it. She is, she has really pushed my execution ability as a leader as we've been married. And, yeah, so she's right up there. My mom is my campaign manager. We've never worked together professionally, and this has been incredibly fun. We affectionately call her the momager. And then my dad and I are business partners. And so, you know, he's taught me more than anybody. So I totally dodged your question and answered it with three, but...
You sound like a lawyer.
I'm not.
So, but then the companion question to that is, as we talked about earlier, you're familiar with personal mistakes. What's the lesson that you hold closest that you learned from a mistake that you made?
You know, I'm not all that great at administrative stuff, right? So I create support structures around me of people who are good at it, right? I mean, I have learned from my mistakes to build support structures and a team around my weaknesses. Also, you know, and I never say I haven't made the same mistake twice, but making a mistake a second time isn't a mistake, it's a decision, you know? And I own that too. And so, I hold myself to pretty high standards and beat myself up. But at the same time, I have learned so much from the things I've gotten wrongly, like big mistakes that, like, are embarrassing. But also, you know, I'm a software developer, and there's probably no profession where you make more mistakes than software development. And so, that's also the best way to learn things. If that didn't work, I'll try something.
You've mentioned a few times the Every Student Succeeds Act that was shepherded by Senator Alexander and passed overwhelmingly by both houses of Congress. There's been a lot of disruption in public education over the last decade, whether you had Common Core, whether you had student evaluations, Race to the Top. This seems to be bringing some stability that No Child Left Behind perhaps did not so much. How do you envision yourself, if elected, and even if, working as a private citizen, you ensure that the vision of, maybe I'm asking the question the wrong way, but do you think that disruptive disruptions to the public education system as it is are still necessary? Or is there a need for stability? And can the ESSA achieve that?
Yeah, I'm really excited about ESSA. I went to a seminar talk with Senator Alexander at Belmont University a few weeks ago, and he was describing it as an opportunity, as an opportunity to push the state to follow the same model of relinquishing control from the federal to the state, to relinquish control from the state to the district. And I think that's right. I think that if we want to value our educators as a profession, then letting them be professionals and giving them, you know, more say in this process. And that's the side of ESSA that I think is really exciting, and there's this huge opportunity. So when we have a big opportunity, it's our responsibility to take advantage of it and to execute on it. And so, I really look forward to seeing, you know, how we can use that to move to a more holistic, I mean, really look at the education system from new eyes, say, how do we want, you know, what do we want the outcomes, what do we want the outcomes to be? The kids in school now are going to work in jobs that don't exist yet. The rate of change in the world, we're going to have to change the education system to meet that. And there are, to me, ESSA is about freedom and to do that.
And presumably, the buck stops at the local communities then, as opposed to the federal government then?
Yeah, I mean, there's no blaming somebody else, right? Like, let's own it, and then let's get it done.
Can we circle around to an earlier line of questioning that David had started? The role of parental choice in our school system. We've been, you know, oftentimes, we frame it as charter versus traditional. But in reality, we have a school system with many different kinds of parental choice. And the question I would have, and I should have followed it up then, is, you know, do we have enough choice today? Do we need more choice? How should we, how would you articulate the choice matrix that we've implemented here in metro schools?
Sure, and so I'd break that into two questions. One, do we have enough options, right? And there are options that I don't think a lot of people are opting into, but there are default options. But we have some really great options, and I think what we need to focus on is making sure that there are no bad options. And so, you know, through school improvement, we can do that. Do we have enough choice is different, because I think of it in terms of who has choice. When I was a kid, we got a PO box in Hillsborough Village so I could attend Aiken, and that doesn't work anymore, right? Now you have to actually buy a house or rent a house in the districts in order to go to a zone school. As traffic in Nashville changes so much, the choice of driving across town is getting much more expensive for families in terms of the time and the actual cost it takes to execute that choice. And so, I still think there are a lot of families in Nashville that don't have a lot of choice. This is why, you know, in the mayor's race, we talked about great school regardless of zip code, which could mean, you know, you can go anywhere. But to me, I think we have to have great schools in every neighborhood, and that that's how we make Nashville the city that it really can be in terms of education. And so, there are neighborhoods where a lot of the parents don't have a lot of choice. And I think, yeah, absolutely think we need to work on that. One of the things I'm most proud of from my time on the report card is the Stride Program. We worked with Mayor Dean, that came up in a discussion with Mayor Dean during a committee meeting. We made the recommendation, he put it in the budget. I went to the council to advocate for it, they pushed it through. And so, every MMPS high school and middle school student can ride MTA for free, which absolutely has increased their choices. And I have students, I have sons who exercise that and who ride the bus. As a parent, I have had kids in every kind of public school almost. We've had priority zone schools, zone school, pathway schools, optional schools, magnet schools, academic magnet schools, and even spent a semester with a kid at a charter school. And so, we've heavily executed choice. And I understand that that will always be there for parents that can afford it. What we need to do is make sure that every parent has the ability to choose if they want to.
In that same vein, there were some discussions at all three committee forums for the finalists for school director about magnet schools and whether or not you need to increase the number of magnet schools in the district or give more opportunities for people to win a seat in a lottery? And what are your thoughts about that?
I think that it doesn't matter what the type of school is. I think what we need to do is we need to make sure every kid has access to really high-quality opportunities and options. I have a son who will be a freshman at MLK. He went from head to MLK seventh and eighth, and now he'll be a freshman at MLK. He'll be taking AP Biology. He'll be taking Algebra II. He'll be taking Mandarin II, all as a freshman. There are only two schools in Nashville, I think, where you can take Algebra in the seventh grade. And there are more where you can take it in the eighth. So he took Algebra in the seventh, Geometry in the eighth, will take Algebra II as a freshman. That needs to be available at more schools. We need to be able to have those kind of high-end options. The number of AP classes that we have at magnets versus a lot of our zone schools is a grave disparity. And if you look at the, and this is going back to that metrics that we should be measuring on how students are succeeding, AP or college credit rates during high school is a hugely important predictor of future college success and one where we have incredible disparity in Nashville. The number of students getting AP credits in North Nashville is embarrassing. And so, we need to make sure that we are increasing those kind of options and opportunities. And I don't think that the only way to do that is do more academic magnet schools by any means. And I think that's what people are wanting when they're choosing the academic magnets. I know when I made that decision, that's what it was about.
We're in our last few minutes of this interview. Are there any issues that we haven't discussed that you'd like to talk about?
Yeah, I think that the diversity report is something that needs to be looked at and addressed. That's another area where we have some grave disparity. And we have a diversity plan, and I think that we can't create plans and set them on the shelf and feel like we did something. Like, it's time to execute and hold accountable. And so, we need to be looking at the diversity of our team inside of public education in Nashville. We just know that students do better when some of their teachers look like them. And that's not the case for too many of our kids. And so, we need to be making sure that we are retaining and recruiting and building that team that reflects the diversity of our city, because that's one of our strengths. We have a huge opportunity there. The other thing, you know, we have a growing EL population, and I think it's really important that one thing that we can, that we can, that we're going to have to figure out how to address more is communication with parents, particularly in that community. I was at an optional enrollment event at Coleman Community Center earlier this year, and only three parents showed up. And they had two translators covering three languages, and they had Spanish and Arabic and something else. And a woman who spoke Burmese was one of the three parents, and we didn't have a translator. You know, it's just a hard problem. And maybe it's one that we can fix with technology. I don't know what it is, but it's something that we're going to have to address because it's a growing part of our community. And then the only other thing I'd like to say is I'd love to have your support, and please vote for Jackson Miller on August 4th.
Tell us how people can contact you.
Yeah, my website is at JacksonForStudents.com, and my cell phone is 615-275-8772. I was just at a breakfast with Congressman Cooper. He gave out his cell phone to everybody there. I'm giving it out to everybody from you. He said, nobody have used it. I'm hoping I have the same experience. But I'd love to talk to you and would love to have your support. I think that we can make Nashville the number one urban school district in the nation with the right leadership. I think I'm one of those leaders.
Very good. And thank you very much to our readers and viewers on Tennessean.com. Our next set of interviews start on Monday, and you can catch replays on Tennessean.com. Have a great weekend.